Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to our meetings this morning. Before we begin our council study session, we will have the Mesa Housing Services Governing Board meeting. And I'll note for the record that all of the board members for that meeting are present. First, item on our agenda for this meeting is items from citizens present. Ms. Mosley, have there been any requests to speak from the public?
Mayor, we have no requests.
Thank you. Item two on our agenda is the approval of prior minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Ms. Duff and Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Item 3A is a presentation and discussion on the City of Mesa Public Housing Agency Annual Plan for fiscal year 2024-25 and updates regarding the City of Mesa Housing Choice Voucher Program. Mary Rosario, good to have you with us.
Good morning, Chair and Board members. I am Mary Brandon, the Deputy Director with Community Services, and I have with me Rosario Beltran Joshi, our Housing Administrator. We do have a vacancy on our resident board member. We're working with getting that filled, so hopefully by the next meeting, we will have that ready for that. I'm going to turn over the mic to Rosario.
Good morning, Chair and Board members. This slide here has four key objectives from our housing annual plan. Overall, we're doing well on all of the objectives. The housing needs strategy, we have the landlord specialist position, and the program participation from landlord continues to improve. Landlords now have the one-on-one point contact for any other property needs, and that has been received very positive. On the financial resources, we provide assistance to Mesa families and program participants on the refundable portion of the security deposit program and the utility deposit. We also have the landlord incentives for the landlords that participate on the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Payment standards, this is what we use to calculate the tenant's portion of rent, and we set the payment standard amount based on the fair market rents, and they are aligned with the market rents in Mesa. The family self-sufficiency program, this is a voluntary five-year program. It's offered to housing participants to receive case management, and they get support services with the goal to become self-sufficient. We currently have 51 enrolled participants in this program, and 24 of those new enrollments happened in the last 12 months. Go to the next slide. Next, I'll provide a brief update on the Mesa Housing Administrative Plan changes. The most significant changes on this administrative plan are coming from income, assets, and eligibility. HUD provided additional guidance to housing authorities on how to calculate income from different sources as well as assets in general, and making sure that we're following HUD guidelines is essential for the program. This needs to be done at program eligibility at the time of enrollment and every year at the annual reexamination for families. One of the examples of the changes is previously, everyone that wanted to come into the program needed to sign an authorization for release of information at the beginning and also every year after that, and now they only have to sign it one time for the duration of the assistance of the program. The next slide is on the administrative plan updates, is on the small area fair market rents. Small area fair market rents are fair market rents calculated by zip codes. So this sets a voucher amount at the neighborhood rather than the Phoenix metro area. And on November of last year, we received a notice from HUD that we were required and we were designated to start using the small area fair market rents for the Housing Choice Voucher Program. This needs to be implemented January of next year. We believe that this is a good thing because eligible families can now have moved to high opportunity neighborhoods with better schools and low crime areas.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Thank you, Rosario. What is the range of the rents that you're dealing with and how it's affecting our rental population voucher program?
So, yes, Board Member Freeman, the ranges of the rent, it varies depending on the size. So anything from zero, a studio, all the way to six bedrooms. Our payment standards currently for a studio is $1,387, and it can go all the way up for a four-bedroom to $2,745. But we have those amounts posted on our website, and they vary by bedroom size.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. We're happy to take any other questions. If not, then we can, Mary can continue with the rest of the presentation.
Okay. No more questions. Thank you.
Okay. We just wanted to give you a couple of program updates of how we're doing and how we feel the market is going. So our voucher utilization, as you can see here, we're finally increasing our utilization. And what that means is that we are using more vouchers, more families are getting assistance. So we are at nearly a 98% this year right now, and that's exciting because in 2022, we were down to 93.5. Also, our payments, our housing assistance payments, that's the rent payments that we pay on behalf of the participants, you can see they have really increased annually. That is for a couple reasons. Our utilization is up, so we are paying more. Also, the rents are higher, so we're paying more. So we pay over $1.8 million a month on rents. The per-unit cost, what that is, is the average of the rent we pay on behalf of a participant is $1,039. That has increased 19% in two years. I remember when we first started 10 years ago, really looking at that, we were at like 600, so it has really increased because of the market. But the reason for our increase of our rents and our utilization is a couple things. We believe that the markets are finally stabilizing in Mesa. We're not seeing the large rent increases that we have seen over the last couple of years. And then our landlord support person, who is the one point of contact for our landlords, has really worked hard on getting landlords to participate in our program, which gives more housing opportunities for our voucher holders. Just real quick on this one, you'll see on the left the incentives that we have to retain and recruit landlords. Then on the right, you can see how many landlords have agreed to participate in our program. In 2023, that was 57 landlords, and that our position, our landlord support, went out and met landlords to agree to work with our program. That's the end of our presentation. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions before we move on?
I have one.
Yes, Mr. Freeman.
What is our waitlist now? Do you have a waitlist?
We do. We currently always have a waitlist, and so we had it open in August of 2022, and currently we just did a purge, which means we did an update letter. Anyone that was on our waiting list, we send an update letter, and they have to make sure that we've got the most current information, and that was done. And so because people have moved and the letters come back, we'll probably lose about half of what was on the waiting list, so we're in the middle of fixing that. So our waitlist is probably going to be just over 1,000. So we'll see when that will open up again.
All right. Thank you. So how many folks are receiving assistance that are off the waitlist and are actively participating in the program?
So we have a total of 1,926 vouchers.
Okay.
So 98% of that, I should have that number. I don't have that with me.
You know, I was on the radio a couple of days ago talking about housing bills that are currently pending at the Arizona Legislature and the importance of including cities in the conversations about those housing bills. And I just think this is, we didn't plan this, but I think this is just a great example that the cities are very much in the housing industry business. We're the ones that administer these federal plans. We're very involved in working with developers, and so we are in the middle of a housing affordability crisis. I think we all acknowledge that, and the city has a critical role to play in that. But I think it's just, this is a good reminder that the city needs to be involved at the state level, at the national level, in helping to come up with solutions, because we are the ones who are actually providing these services. And we have very knowledgeable staff that knows a lot about what the needs are in our community. So thank you for the good work you do, and I hope we do get some good legislation out of this session that cities can support, that will have an impact. Mr. Haredia.
On the, I know there is some discussion around asking the federal government for more vouchers for the Phoenix area. I know the City of Phoenix, we're not sure if there's any policy update or conversations with our neighbors to ask HUD or the federal government for additional vouchers for this area, because I think based on the population, the growth, I think we're less than we should have for the area. But have we worked with the City of Phoenix or other cities to work on a plan to ask for additional vouchers for Mesa?
Yeah, Board Member Haredia, we were just recently on a call with Gallegos' office, and they are trying to support and ask for additional vouchers for the larger cities in Arizona because of the increase of population and knowing that it's not only your very low and low, extremely low income that need assistance now, we're finding that a lot of people are needing assistance. So they are working on it. So I think we'll find some more information on that.
Okay. And then there is also, I remember a letter being sent from, there is an ask for changing, I think the mayor sent, changing the percentage of from 15% to 30% on the cost of administration or services. Any feedback on that from HUD, or have we received any update on that?
I don't have any update on that, Board Member Haredia, but we do have a meeting with you, I think, in a couple of weeks. Let me have that ready for you at that meeting. How's that?
Perfect.
My recollection is that during COVID, they suspended that cap on the amount of HUD money that could be used on services. But I think now that COVID is in the rearview mirror, we're back to that number that's lower than it should be. So I had a conversation with HUD Secretary Fudge a couple of years ago, and that was the point that I raised with her is that from the city perspective, that's, we love capital projects, we love being able to contribute to capital projects, but there is a need to be able to spend more of that money on services as well. All right. Yes, Mr. Freeman.
Mary Brandon, when I read through this, the 45-day public comment period just ended. Were there any public comments submitted?
No. Board Member Freeman, we didn't have any comments.
Well, I think that's a good thing then, right? I mean, you do want confirmation that you're doing a great job, so I think from the board, you're doing that. But yeah, I just wondered about that. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll proceed. The next item on our agenda, item 3B is to conduct, thank you ladies, is to conduct a public hearing and take action on a resolution approving the City of Mesa Public Housing Agency Annual Plan for fiscal year 24-25 and authorizing the Chairman of the Board to submit the annual plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. I declare the public hearing open. Ms. Mosley, do we have any requests to speak on this agenda item?
No requests, Mayor.
Thank you. Do any board members wish to address this item? I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Thank you, Ms. Billsbury and Mr. Haredia. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. That concludes the agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Summers, and seconded by Ms. Goforth. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. We are adjourned. Welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for March 21st of this year. Again, we'll note that all of our council are present. Item 1A on our agenda for this meeting is a presentation and discussion on the process for appointing the next presiding city magistrate. Mr. Butler and Ms. Stedman, good to have you with us.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Good morning. Good to see you all. Scott Butler joined with Sarah Stedman from the City Attorney's Office, and we're all here unfortunately since John Tatts is, it's going to be leaving us in a few short weeks. And certainly Judge Tatts has been a great presiding magistrate for the city and has contributed a lot to our court, and so we're excited for him and his personal opportunities going forward, but it's certainly a loss for the city and for the court. So we come before you today to get your direction on the process that the council would like to see fulfilling the role of presiding magistrate going forward. And there's really two options available for you. One would be to do an external recruitment that would utilize our judicial advisory board. I'm just making sure I had the acronym there. Judicial Advisory Board. And the other would be an internal recruitment amongst the existing magistrates. And so we can walk through if council would like further details on how either process would work. You see from the presentation that Sarah has put together some of the process that would be aligned with that. It's certainly a longer process to do an external recruitment and utilizes a more comprehensive vetting through the board and then ultimately up to the city council. Using the internal process, we would, we would open it up for the current magistrates to see if there's any interest in serving as presiding and have an internal recruitment process at that point. And if we had internal applicants, we would schedule time where those individual, that individual or individuals could meet with council, and we could make some determinations about whether one-on-one interviews with council would be appropriate or whether a different process would be called for. One thing I do want to note, and Jim, Sarah, please correct me if I'm misstating any of this, but if you did choose to do an internal recruitment and ultimately if you decided that you would like to see a more expansive field considered, you could always then pivot and ask for an external recruitment at a later date. So if you wanted to see the internal interest and then potentially, based on the feedback that you get or the interest that you get from internal candidates, you could always at a later date decide that you would like to go forward with an external recruitment. So that was a very high-level overview of the process, and Sarah and I would be glad to answer any questions.
Scott, we maybe should mention also the process we used previously for the selection of Judge Tatts.
That's right. Mayor and Council, thank you, Mr. Haredia. When we filled this vacancy previously, when Judge Tatts was ultimately selected, we did use the internal recruitment process and solicited from our existing magistrates.
Thank you. I'm anxious to hear from Council, but before I do that, I just want to begin by again expressing our appreciation and my appreciation to Judge Tatts. I think we're all very proud of our court. City of Mesa Municipal Court is where people come to visit from other jurisdictions to get good ideas. So it's a strong court, and we've got a very strong bench. And so for that reason, I think that personally, I would favor looking internally initially. We have all, we're all very familiar with this process because we have appointed all of the judges that are there. I really appreciate the Judicial Advisory Board. They do a very thorough job of vetting applicants for our magistrate positions. I'm always very surprised at the quality of the candidates that we interview. And so because of that, we've got a highly qualified bench. And because our court is somewhat unique, we really have embraced the specialty courts more so than I think a lot of other cities have. That's part of the reason why they come here, to get better at things. So I think it would be difficult for someone coming, a little bit of a challenge for somebody coming outside of that system to come in and immediately start leading it. So for those reasons, I'm just going to put my two cents out there that I think I would prefer to at least begin the process by looking internally. And of course, we will interview people before we make a selection, because according to the charter, this is one of the few hires that we're responsible for. So, and then if we, for whatever reason, feel like we'd like to get to broaden it, then we can do that. But those are my thoughts. Ms. Goforth.
Sorry. I was just curious, is the advisory board involved at all then if it's an internal process?
Well, they've already, they've already met with all these candidates before the council appointed them to the bench.
Okay, in the previous?
In the previous process.
But not as vetting for?
Well, not as, but I think that's what the mayor's referring to, all the internal candidates that have already gone, have gone through that process with the Judicial Advisory Board and met with the city council.
So is it our general process that we do, that we look internally? When was the last time?
Well, I think it was Judge Tefoya, right? Because he came from Phoenix.
Prior to that, yes.
So I don't know how long ago that was.
18?
Longer than, before I was here, it was 25 years.
But Judge Tatts was replaced, Judge Tatts ascended from within the system.
Right. No, I was just trying, the last time we went outside was more than 20 years ago.
Interesting.
So you're right. This would not engage the Judicial Advisory Board if we hired internally, other than the fact that they were involved in hiring these individuals in the first place.
And is that, I mean, obviously their primary function is to go through this process initially, appointing the judge, but is it also a major function to be a part of the presiding judge?
We haven't, I don't believe we sent Judge Tatts through that process again.
Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. I've always advocated for an internal candidate to begin with. I think we should be able to, if we have our magistrates that want to promote, use that word, they should have that opportunity. And I think the advisory board is still not off the hook. We're still going to have to hire a magistrate down the road, right? So I mean, we'll have to go through an external process to replace our judge there. So I'm with the mayor. I think we should do it internally. It's my opinion. So thanks.
Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
Mayor, I think it's also helpful to remember that the Judicial Advisory Board does the initial vetting before you do the initial selection. But then there's, there are also retention, and so they go through retention. Initially, it's for two years, and then it goes back through the Judicial Advisory Board and then comes back to council, then it's another two years, and then they go to a four-year process for retention. And so they're continuously vetted. And so the judges that are on the bench have actually gone through the most vetting through the process, and so I just want you to remember that part of it.
And that includes feedback. They do a survey, it's a survey taken from the prosecutor's defense side, and all that is given to the Judicial Advisory Board for the existing judges.
I think, thanks, Jim, because you have two, two years of vetting till you get to your four-year term appointments. Thank you for that reminder.
Mr. Summers. I'll just offer the counter opinion. I think, you know, Mesa being a large city, that we have the level, the number of courts we have, from veterans courts, the typical courts that we have, there, this would be a highly sought-after job, and I think there could be some very qualified candidates externally that would be, that we would be interested in meeting, that might offer a unique perspective bringing to our city. If our internal magistrates are rise to the top, then that's who we hire, and we're all the better for it. But I think, I think we short ourselves by not at least looking externally at what kind of talent is out there, what type of experiences are out there that might add to our court system and be worth having. So I'd prefer to actually open it up to external candidates. Thank you. Thank you. And I don't entirely disagree with that. Change is good. But I think it would just, I'm curious to look inside first, because I think that as was indicated, this is a lengthy and very thorough process when we go through this, and I'm not sure that it's going to be necessary. But those are my thoughts. Counsel, other comments. Ms. Billsbury.
Yeah, my thought would be what was just said, is that I say we look internally first, and then at that point, knowing that we have the option, if we're not comfortable with someone else I'm good with.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you.
We'll just go ahead and get the candidates. We have one or more than one, we will set up a time for the council to meet with them. We've done that before with, as a group, you sit down and we share the questions, and you have an opportunity as a group to meet with, even if it's just one candidate, we'll set that up.
Okay. Thank you very much. We look forward to doing that. And then also the process to get a new magistrate to fill the opening on the bench.
Right. We'll have to start that, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Summers. I would just add, I'd be uncomfortable if it's just one candidate. I mean, that almost.
Well, I guess, well, we'll see. My point is, we'll see how many are interested. My point is, we would always interview, even if it's one. I didn't say it very well. I mean, the council's going to want to meet with whomever you're going to appoint.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah. Okay. That makes sense. Thank you. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, item 1B is a presentation and a discussion on a proposed memorandum of understanding with Cul-de-sac for the city-owned property at the southwest corner of University and Mesa Drive. Welcome, gentlemen.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Jeff McBay and Jimmy Chiracchio here today this morning. And we're going to give you a quick overview of our efforts with Cul-de-sac to bring an MOU to you. But before we get started, kind of want to just give you a reminder of the background of how we got to where we are today before we get into the details of them, the MOU itself.
Good morning, everybody. Just a quick look back, in August of 2023, we wrapped up our RFP process, which we presented criteria to anyone interested in proposing to meet, saying they were interested to develop Site 17. We did get two back. Cul-de-sac was the one that kind of rose to the top when the staff was looking at it. They met the criteria that was laid out before them. And then in October, we had brought it to the study session to get direction from the city council, and you asked us to move forward towards an MOU with Cul-de-sac for that. Next slide. This is a quick overview of what they proposed, 1,000 residential units on the site with a variety of housing types. Those included for-sale townhomes, courtyard apartments, and mid-rise apartments. One thing to point out, the for-sale townhomes, it's not a guaranteed for-sale yet until they get to do their market studies and stuff. However, we have very, very serious conversations about, they really want to do for-sale on that. So that's what we're working with the understanding of right now. They do plan to do that market study once the DA is in place, so we will have a better understanding at that time. Buildings will range anywhere from two to five stories. They'll have a good amount of commercial space with 25,000 to 50,000 of that, also 25,000 to 50,000 of residential amenities for the tenants there. And then they'll have open space, green space, up to 50% of that throughout the project, and that will be semi-public as well. And then for parking, they're going to, they're looking for 800 parking spaces on the site, which is a significant reduction from what would actually normally be required there, but that fits the car light development that they want to produce. Next slide. The layout, how you see it here, the two-to-three-story townhomes are at the bottom of the screen there. That is adjacent to the existing historic neighborhood. And then as you go up towards University, you'll go to the courtyard residential, the mid-rise. The townhomes are looking to do live-work units and/or units within unit parking. And then as you go up to the mid-rise, that'll be the highest density. The pinkish color sections you see, that is the retail there, what they call retail row. The retail they would like to do would basically be things that would service the neighborhood and the community itself, grocer, any kind of services that would be necessary. And they do like to keep the businesses that they partner with local. If you look at the development they just finished in Tempe, they're trying to keep those as local businesses there as well. And the other pieces of it, the mobility hub, that would be for car share, things like that, for picking people up on sites or deliveries there for that as well. Next slide. Next slide. And then the phasing plan, they would start with phase one, which would be the, the townhomes up against the existing neighborhood. That one, they, one of the great things they want to do with that is the immediate activation of that with, with, starting with activities and events, like a nighttime market, things like that, that could actually engage the community, get them out, get conversations going with them as well, the existing community. And then they'll go to the, the courtyard homes, and then finally, the mid-rise, the highest density would be the last phase of the project. And with that, I'll hand it over to Jeff.
All right. So, related to the memorandum of understanding, the major deal points that we will be using as the, as the guiding, as guiding us as we go into our development agreement negotiations include several obligations on the part of Cul-de-sac. The first and most important of which is that they will develop a mixed-use neighborhood that's consistent with their RFP response and what we've just, what Jimmy just presented to you. Our development agreement will include these, each of those will come in performance measures. So each, by each phase, there will be a minimum amount of residential units, a minimum amount of commercial space, a minimum amount of public improvements, enhanced public improvements that are included into the development. They'll include milestones for when zoning entitlements were completed, they'll include milestones for when construction commencement has to start, begin, and when construction has to be completed. It'll also include a requirement that they prevent, provide us with sufficient demonstration of their financial capacity to complete each phase prior to us, and we will, we'll call these conditions precedent to us selling the property to them. So we will enter into a purchase and sale agreement that says, once you have completed each of these steps and you have provided us with enough evidence that the property is entitled, and that you have your financing in place, then we will sell the property to you, and then you can start commencement, commence construction. It'll also include obligations for them to provide public easements over top of much of the, of the private open space, so that we have a, a network of, of semi-public open space that's available to the broader residents of Mesa and downtown. It is important to note that they are specifically not requesting a G-plat from us as an incentive to this, to this project. Similarly, though, the, the MOU does include some, the deal points in which there's city obligations attached to it. Biggest and most important in their mind, this, unlike Tempe, where it's a car-free, truly a car-free development, they recognize that they are not immediately adjacent to light rail, so a car-light development is what they are proposing. Now, 800 parking spaces for 1,000 units in a, in a urban transit-rich environment is, is reasonable, but compared to our zoning ordinance, that's a reduction of about, I think it's about 1,200 un, 1,200 spaces. Normally, you would be required 2.1 parking spaces per unit where this location is, so it's just under 20, about 2,100 parking spaces. They're also asking for support for multimodal and transit infrastructure improvements. Now, that's both on the public and the private side. So within their own development, support for improvements that connect better to light rail, but also on the public side. The fact that this site is a little over a quarter mile from the nearest light rail station at the closest point, and almost a half mile from the furthest point, means that connections to the light rail station in the broader downtown are very important. So we will be, through the development agreement process, we will be looking for those opportunities to connect, better connect Site 17 to light rail, but also that those, any of those connections that we look at have a broader benefit to the downtown area. So it's not just benefiting one project. They're also requesting reimbursement of the non-dedicated portion of our construction sales tax that can be used for offsetting the cost of enhanced public improvements. Very, very common within our development agreements is the provision of a customized review schedule, which essentially means that we will agree upon timeframes for when we complete zoning entitlements and also building plan reviews.
Mr. Summers.
Just curious on the parking, because it, parking, are they planning to do, go vertical with parking, go underground with parking? So it's not just surface parking?
Sorry, if you.
It wasn't really, it's not really clear on the colored triangles and squares and rectangles.
So it's a combination, Mayor, Councilmember Summers, it's a combination. So on the lower, on that first phase where there's townhomes, that would include in-unit park, those generally include in-unit parking spaces, garage, something along that line. But if you look at the north in the third phase, where they have that number five triangle, that would be a structured parking facility that then serves the broader community.
Okay, so.
Vertical.
So the thing in the middle?
Yes.
Whatever.
So it'd essentially be a parking garage wrapped with, with retail and residential.
Okay. And then, just out of curiosity, I'm probably getting ahead of the presentation here, how did we select the lower density of the south and at higher density of the north? Is it the, does the south have lower density?
To the south is, is a historic, single-family neighborhood, and amongst our guiding, when we started a few years ago, developing guiding principles, one of the major ones was creating a, a, a natural transition from the single-family north to the higher density.
Okay. No, I, I get the transition, I was trying to remember downtown, I pass it every day, you think I paid a little bit more attention to it. Because it would seem that downtown, you do your higher density, so to me, it just seemed a flip, but with a historic neighborhood there, that, okay, that makes some sense. Okay, thank you.
Jeff, while we're, while we're, pause for a minute. On that particular slide that we were showing, the parking garage, so do we have parking-facing or is this not designed, it's just placement? Do we have parking garage facing University there? We have retail on each side and the retail on the inside?
So the, the garage is in the center, and it is wrapped by, the exterior along University and along interior, and on all four sides is wrapped by, by residential and commercial development.
Okay, so it's all the way around, residential and, and commercial all the way around?
So the intent would not to be have a public-facing garage, that there would be something covering it up.
Okay, that was my concern.
What I should also mention is that this does, it doesn't necessarily show very well, but this does include a, a significant amount of on-street parking spaces built into the, the street network.
Okay. I have a lot of questions, but we'll get back to the slide that you were at. Provision of impact fee offsets for previous development on the project property, could you, I know you mentioned that, but I, I really don't understand it.
Our city code, and this is, while we're including this in our MOU as a, as a, as an obligation of the city, that is something that the code allows today without it being a term of the development agreement. If you had a development on a property previously, there is a certain amount of impact that was already brought into our system. So you get credit for that impact, and you aren't, essentially, you're only paying the impact fees for the difference between what the original impact is and your increased impact.
So that would mean like?
Literally translates to utility.
Yes.
Well, utility, yeah.
Like where those townhomes are on the?
Well, it just means that how much of the additional utility capacity you have to bring to the site.
Okay. So it's infrastructure that is really kind of unseen to provide to the businesses that are on the edges? Okay, all right. Sorry, can I go back to the parking? So what about phase two? So the phase one, you said in garages, and phase three is obviously the structure, what, is it just the on-street takes care of phase two?
Yes. There, there could be a combination of some in-unit parking, but you can also see, it's, it's not necessarily the most clear, but there's small areas, you can see a small area of parking here, of surface parking, there's on-street parking.
So there will be surface parking?
There will be a small amount of surface parking, yes.
And I know at the Cul-de-sac in Tempe, I believe the residents have an agreement with the management, whoever is managing, that they abide by a certain parking standard. I know there it's zero, but here, I guess it would be less than one.
In, in, in Cul-de-sac Tempe, you sign a lease, and that lease requires you to agree that you will not have a car on the property. I guess it doesn't mean that you couldn't pay to keep your car off-site, but it is an agreement that you will not have a vehicle on-site.
And as it pertains to this project, do you have an idea what that agreement would be?
We haven't gotten into details about that yet.
But it would be to?
But it would be, the idea is to try to keep as many people without cars as they could, and only accommodate some. So I'm, I'm not sure if they would say the courtyard wouldn't have vehicles, or how they would work that, or have so many spaces and first-come, first-served for leases, and once those are taken, no one else. We'd have to discuss those further.
And Cul-de-sac markets, that is their lifestyle that they're promoting. So they're coming forward to it versus other current apartment complexes that we see that are standard, there is no mention, but this is kind of a lifestyle commitment as far as car light or minimal impact from cars. So people are kind of subscribing to that by rent, and I'm sure they'll have to sign up for that. And I have a bunch of other questions, but I don't want to get too far off.
Yes, and, and just, I guess, to kind of wrap on that, or just kind of touch on that point a little bit, the people that choose Cul-de-sac, or people that moved to Cul-de-sac are choosing Cul-de-sac, not that they aren't just saying, oh, here's an apartment finally that's available, they are choosing it because they want to live that lifestyle. I can't, I'm not going, I might not have this number right, but the last time when we went and toured Cul-de-sac, they had mentioned, I think it was, they had a waiting list of 900 people to get an apartment. So I think the demand exists, the product just wasn't there yet for it.
Hey, Jeff, real quick, on the, on the multimobility transit infrastructure improvements, any idea of what, with a car light, with that many homes, I think there's got to be some creative ways to move people around and/or, you know, a mixture of things, any identification of that? I know we have a study for the downtown around multimodal pieces, right? Or has that started or not yet?
We're very close, Councilmember Haridi, we're very close. We, we, we are doing the selection of a consultant for the micro-mobility plan right now. We actually just had a meeting with one of our consult, one of the consultants yesterday to talk about their scope and fee. So we hope that that will be starting soon. But there are several things that we are going to look at, that Cul-de-sac is what we requested that we look at as part of this. It includes things like bike and pedestrian infrastructure that helps better connect Site 17 to downtown. It includes some improvements, even the, the provision of, say, bike lockers near the light rail station, so somebody has a bike and they can, they can take it to the light rail station and lock it up. It includes the idea of whether or not we can accommodate, and these are all things that we have to look at, and we have to figure out what the actual costs implications are once we get into the development agreement. But, you know, would it make sense to have a circuit, a separate circulator, or to reroute the buzz to create a separate, a different circulator route that helps serve the site? Does it make sense for us to incorporate infrastructure that supports autonomous vehicles? So maybe we get a, they have a very strong relationship with Waymo in Cul-de-sac Tempe. Maybe we can convince Waymo to create a circulator route in which we have drop-off points, you know, built into the downtown, but specifically with, in Site 17 as well. So these are all, there's a broad list of things that we're looking at, but we need to evaluate each one of those and the, and what the cost would be as we're going through the development agreement negotiations.
Yeah, because one of the things we want to be careful is we don't transfer that cost to the rest of the city, that benefits only one development. So we've got to figure out the equity of providing operations that benefits one neighborhood or one subdivision, and not necessarily have the entire city subsidizing that.
But it, it connects to the larger downtown region that moves people.
Absolutely. And if we can redirect it, so it picks that up, yeah, absolutely.
So on that, we're not going to let you here. Did you want to go first? Okay, so on that idea. Yes. Oh, no, seriously. Go ahead. Yeah. Anyway, along that idea, I, I think as a downtown, eventually, with the density building, that we have to, you know, of course, centralized parking, get away from parking at-site, and I would like to see for all of downtown, some kind of shuttle, eventually, when we have the density, that wherever you park, that's fine, you can pick up the shuttle, and you can go from one end of downtown to the next, and you're not worried about where your car is, you just park one time, and you have quick access if you're on the east end and want to go to the west end, or north and south, something like that. I think eventually, I would love to see some kind of downtown shuttle that we run, so that people can navigate without only walking or biking. And then the second thing is, is this form-based code, or is it rezone?
This property is not, is not included, is not in the form, there is a form-based code. It will be, it's currently downtown core zoning, that will require us to go through a rezoning process.
Okay. So you were talking about the, the waiting list at Tempe, and, but Tempe is a very unique development. I mean, it is, I mean, it is car-free, transit-oriented. This seems to be a bit more of a hybrid, so you think those principles are, are going to be as popular, meaning those people-oriented principles will be as popular, even though there's parking? I mean, I guess, I'm just wondering if you can really, can you really say, we'll be as, we'll be as desirable as Tempe, when this is really not the same? I'm, I'm, I like all their principles, let me start with that. But I, I was sort of thinking about, you know, the different, this, this is a different development, but it is definitely not a very unique. It's just kind of a hybrid of, we're going to do less parking, more people-oriented, but, so.
Councilmember, go forth. Forgive me for, for, for showing my bias.
Show it. I want to hear it.
I think that this is going to be more desirable than Tempe. Tempe is a great development, and its real advantage that allows it to be car-free is that it's immediately on a light rail station, but it's not in a community. It's not in a downtown, it's out, it's on the edge of downtown Tempe. So this is a development, while it's not as close to transit, it's in a downtown environment that is more, to me, it's a, it's a community, it's a neighborhood that you want to live in, and you're going to walk to, want to walk to downtown, onto Main Street, into the unique local restaurants, versus necessarily, you know, getting on the light rail is an effort unto itself, and in Tempe, that's your choice to go to, unless you're going to the local grocer that's in Cul-de-sac. I don't consider the, the environment of Cul-de-sac Tempe to be as great as the environment of Cul-de-sac Mesa.
So what's the tag, sorry to kind of go off, but what's the tagline of ours? I mean, there's this car-free, everybody, that is, what, what's ours? What, what will this be?
I don't know about, I'm not sure I know the tagline, I'm not sure I can be that creative that quickly, but when they are looking, they are very interested in doing this because they want to be able to bring this model to more places. And, and because we are different than Tempe, it is, is a, will be a proof of concept that this can be something that works in someplace that isn't car-free. It can work in, in a, you know, more, I hate to say the word, but a more suburban downtown.
Not be as extreme. Okay, thank you.
Jeff, the, up towards University, the higher density, how high, how many stories do we ultimately get to?
Five stories.
Five stories.
Yeah. Okay, I think I have two more points on this slide. Okay, we will also, as a city, will be willing to provide utility rate incentives to end users and tenants. These, though, are only those utility rate incentives that are in our current utility rate book. So there are, we have small business startup utility rates for electric and water that's available inside of the city's electric utility, and that's essentially what that means. There will also be opportunities for, potential opportunities for state and federal grants that support the multimobility goals that the city would be, or committing to support and/or co-sponsor with Cul-de-sac. So some general?
Jeff, just can you go back to the utility rate incentives and kind of explain that a little more thoroughly?
So today, several, several years ago, we worked with our, our electric and water departments to, to essentially create a small business startup utility rate. If you are a new small business inside of the city's electric utility area, and you're going to create at least a couple of jobs, you are eligible, if you move into the startup or move into downtown from outside of the utility area, you are eligible for a 25% reduction in your electric and water rates for the first three years of your operation, with the idea being that the first three years of, of a new business's operational period is their most challenging. So if we can help with a little bit of the overhead, that we can help potentially with their long-term success.
Yeah, you didn't, I, I thought in perpetuity or something like that.
Oh, no.
Only within.
Sorry, three years.
Okay.
And this only applies to businesses, right?
Small businesses, yes.
And we have, how many have we had?
We've had.
It's a handful.
Ten at the most over the, over the last five. We had our first graduates about two years ago that graduated out of the program, and it, and it's a nice, it's, it's not a huge cost to the city, but it's, it's a very nice benefit to the businesses.
So, so this is an incentive for the commercial and retail development around the project?
And it is.
With a three-year time commitment, 25% reduction.
And, and small business is an important part about that. It is, you have to be defined as a small business, that we are going to provide this to the corporate entities.
And, and going back to the impact fee, has there been impact fees on the properties previously, and then to our current impact fee?
So the impact fees, the, would, the impact fee offsets that would be available, so that every, every single-family house that was there had a certain size water meter. So every single family house that was there had a certain size water meter. The impact fee offset is based off that water meter. So let's say they had a half-inch water meter. If that, Cul-de-sac would get the credit for a half-inch water meter. If they're putting a one-inch water meter in, they would pay the difference between the half-inch and the one-inch.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
So some general terms that are just applicable across the board for the MOU, we are looking at a nine-month timeframe for the MOU to be active. During that nine months, we would be intending to complete the negotiations, the development agreement and purchase agreement. Following the completion of the development agreement, purchase agreement negotiations, Cul-de-sac would go into their zoning entitlements. The sale of the first phase of the property would be based on a market-based appraisal. That market-based appraisal then would be used to extrapolate out future phase costs using something along the line of a CPI adjuster to say when phase two comes to phase three. And now, and now we're ready for some questions.
Jeff, is that, is that, do we do that?
Yes. It is not uncommon way for us to establish land value over time. And the reason that we do something along that line is that we, it's going to sound, they should not necessarily be punished for the value that they've added to the land going forward.
All right. I, well, I'll kick off some discussion. I think, here's what I like about this, we're really embracing transit-oriented development. We've invested many millions of dollars in the light rail and I think that's, I'm pleased with the results that we've seen, the investment that it's brought, but I think we need to continue, I think light rail is still, at this point, I would call it underutilized. And so this type of high-density transit-oriented development, I think, is appropriate. I think this is a good transition with the Wilbur neighborhood. If I lived in the Wilbur neighborhood, I'd be thrilled. The commercial neighborhood and amenities that are coming with this, I think are going to make that neighborhood desirable and the surrounding neighborhood. I fully expect to see the aging, declining shopping center to the north of this project be redeveloped as a result of this. And so I think there'll be some good ripple effects. This is a great brand. Cul-de-sac is very, very successful in Tempe and next, I think, in Atlanta. And it's, this is a feather in our cap. This is something that people know about and has, it's known for being high-quality, known for being innovative. And it, all along, my biggest goal for Site 17 has been to create a neighborhood that is a desirable place for people to live, like Dobson Ranch, like Eastmark, like Los Endes, you know, a place that people say, where do you live? And they say, I live at Cul-de-sac Mesa. And I'm thrilled. You know, it's a place that I want to go. It's a place where I want to raise my kids. So I think this checks that box. A question about, I know the for-sale product, the townhomes, that's contingent on market studies and there's not a strong commitment or an absolute commitment to do that yet. But before the city agrees to this, that question will be resolved. Is that correct?
Mayor, I will, I will tell you that they have a strong desire to include for-sale product. They are not far enough along to be able to make that as a commitment, but if that is the desire of the council, we can definitely make that a condition of our development agreement.
Well, personally, I like diversity in housing. I don't want it to all be the same of anything. And the more different types of people, the more different types of economic resources that come to the area, I think the better for recruiting businesses. And so I want there to be small, affordable places and I want there to be something that's market or above-market. So I'm intrigued by it incorporating some for-sale product, personally. So those are my thoughts. I'm very much in favor of continuing down this path and hopefully coming up with a good agreement with Cul-de-sac. Mr. Freeman.
Well, I appreciate the conversation. And as I've traveled in the valley and seen other developments like this and even cul-de-sacs, but I would consider, to the mayor's point, a for-sale product like in condominiums, condos and some of the high-rise, because, as you know, some people, as they choose to leave their single-family residence, they just want to turnkey ownership and be able to come and go. And so I think a condo would be very appropriate. Phoenix has been very successful, North Scottsdale, the ones I've attended and been into, they're just beautiful concepts. So I think that should be, that gives you a blend of ownership if you're considering the townhomes, which I fully support, the transition between the Wilbur District and going to the north. Where I think ownership is critical because there might be some expendable income there to help support the commercial and retail business there as you are the owner of that You've heard this before, Jeff, I think we need to continue to leverage some higher density in the area because that will support our light rail and other multimodal transportation area. You know, five stories is great, but I think you've heard me say seven or eight is even better. And that's what's happening in other communities. But I also think, as I read through this presentation with over 1,000 apartments and other amenities, commercial and retail, I think we're going to have a parking issue. I just, I just feel it in my bones. You know, we're, we're a society, I know we want to transition away from driving, but we're trying to create this niche in this area, but people are going to still drive to this area. The apartments are probably going to have people who drive there. The townhomes will have their own garage, like we've been asked before, as the developers have built those. But I, I just think the reduction in the parking might be a future issue that we ought to look into a little bit further. But I know we want people to walk the light rail and use, you know, our bus and circulator routes, but, you know, that's just some of my thoughts. And I'm excited about this project. My only thought is, what's going to happen to Circle K? Is that going to still remain there? And then the other.
We don't know that.
But I know, but they having conversations with them about how the development's going to happen around them. And then there's the townhomes too, along Mesa Drive there too. Just keep everybody abreast what's going on there. That's all I'm asking. That's the only questions I have or thoughts.
Thank you. Ms. Fieldsbury.
A lot of what I've been thinking has already been said, but I just want to maybe reiterate a couple of Mark's points as well. I, of course, would not be me if I didn't mention my concerns over parking, especially in this area. But I guess, yeah, I'd want to see, like, is there going to be on the streets surrounding Cul-de-sac, is there going to just be piles of cars because there's not enough parking within the development? So I'd want to take a really good, close look at that. That has huge impacts on surrounding neighborhoods that they then have to deal with for years afterwards. So I would, I would also want to make a point to make sure we look at parking. And, yeah, I also would support more ownership opportunities. I hear that a lot from people, having children that I hope would live in Mesa. I think that's a, something that is what people want in our city and that there's just not enough of that product right now. So I would also express my support in that, although I think we usually don't have a lot of say in that aspect, right? Whether something's going to be owned or rented.
In this case, you have all.
You own the property.
And so that's why we can have a say in this.
You can. The challenge is you're, and I get it, it's not, it's, but you're, you're taking, you're imposing on a market, right?
Right.
And the question is, can the judgment of saying it has to be owner-occupied, and then for how long, right? How do we enforce that? It could be sold to someone and then two years later it's gone. I mean, there's legal ways you can do that, but then you're, you're imposing on a market. And the question is, right now, right, most of the units, residential units that are being built in Mesa are all rentals. Because going back to the first conversation we had this morning, because of the challenges with housing costs and certainly interest rates. So, you know, it always becomes a question. That's why I say, and I'll say it again, and I do it respectfully, but as a city where horrible developers.
Right.
Because we're not motivated like most developers are of looking at the property and trying to maximize profits. And not that that's a bad thing, but we've got to figure out that balance between what we want to achieve from a public purpose, but at the same time allowing the private sector, Cul-de-sac, to also exercise, you know, the responding to the market. So part of this could be wait till the market study's completed and see what the market's saying. So, but if that's a challenge. But I think the commitment on the front end, I think the townhomes, making that owner-occupied makes a whole lot of sense because of its interface with the owner-occupied immediately to the south. As you transition higher density, that's harder to separate out.
Right.
From owner-occupied because you've got, you know, five-story units. So I think it does make sense and maybe it's a percentage, it's a blend, but I think the way they're trying to transition it, it's, like the mayor said, I think it's right. You want to blend. You don't want just all rentals. And it's nice also to have opportunity or, you know, you want to have owner-occupied and rentals because you do want to have place for people to have entry-level opportunities too.
Or retirement.
Or, well, yeah, and I don't know if retirees looking for rentals maybe, or are they just looking to change, move their equity into a condo or something like that.
As they age out and their family goes on. So that, and I guess I'm always trying to like figure out what the market's saying, what makes more money, and that's why the developers push that and what the community actually, right, well, I know. So, and then what does the community actually want, right? So we can say it's the market, but a lot of times it's what makes more money. And so, I mean, that, I guess I just want, and over the last three-plus years, I have heard more times than I can count that we were promised owner-occupied and it went to rental. I mean, that's just every development, it's like.
And I don't think we've ever, no one ever.
Well, no, because you can't promise it, right? But, but just to the point that I do think our community is so hungry for more rental owner-occupied, I mean, not rental, but owner-occupied spots.
It swings, right? It's, you know.
Well, if I may.
Yeah, I have one more point, but.
Go ahead.
On that.
Well, my point is that the markets do change.
Yes.
And if we jump on what's today, to make your point.
Right.
We jump on what's today and just, we want to get this developed really quickly, then we're going to get what today's market is, right? And think about what's well-capitalized, the problems in my district is digging fast foods and data centers because they're well-capitalized. But in time, those sit-down restaurants are going to come back, the industrial is going to come back. Class A office space, we just broke ground on first-class A office space at Gateway Airport. Markets change. So how we, how we allow this to develop over time, we might be able to tap into a market that we would like to see served, which is that the condo ownership is.
And I think the diversity point is what we're all probably going for, that we want all of it, a little bit of all of it. So I guess my other just question, and I don't know if you could answer this, but because we have such a huge amount of units becoming available on the market right now, are we currently being able to fill all of those right now? I don't know how Melody on Main's doing. I know a little bit about how Eco Mesa's doing, but just maybe to Alicia's point is like, are we going to be able, is this going to be as popular as we think it's going to be?
Trying to time the market is impossible.
There's three phases.
Right.
And, you know, this isn't going to get built for years.
This is a, this is probably a 10-year build-out over the course of three years, or three phases. But in general, absorption in downtown is strong. Eco Mesa is a little slower than they want it to be, but they're at 50%. And what they will tell you, and they will smile when they're telling you, is that 50% of the people that walk in their door and tour a unit sign a lease, which is a huge conversion rate, even if they are not necessarily at the occupancy they want to be. Melody on Main, having no issues at all. They're almost to their final C of O. I have, I have, again, let my bias show, I have no doubt that the market for living in downtown Mesa will remain strong. We are a desirable community. We are different than Gilbert, Tempe, Phoenix, Scottsdale. And there's, and there's something, that difference is something that separates us and that people are choosing to live in our downtown.
I think it's okay that you have bias for the fact that this is what you're doing, so it's okay.
Well, my bias isn't.
You love downtown Mesa.
My bias isn't uneducated, and, you know, Mr. Brady moved us to the post. We get, we get to look into the area where people are living now, and we were just talking yesterday, the number of times that we see somebody walking their dog that we know didn't live here before, but now are living in apartments next to us. We are, it's very exciting to see the number of people coming here. And when you talk to them, they are choosing it on purpose.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Summer.
No, I'm supportive of this. I would say that the interest in Mesa, we are different than all those communities for several reasons, but I think the biggest one is value. You get in early, think of downtown Phoenix, when I arrived, when I landed here in 1988, downtown Phoenix was dead. If you bought a condo downtown in 1988, you're doing pretty well. And I, this is such an undervalued market here, and that's, I think, why we want to see the opportunity for people to own a piece of this. And I know you can't time markets, you can try, but projects can, can take a little more time to see how markets evolve underneath them. And to allow that, some of that flexibility, we might be able to accomplish the goals that we want to see. And that's, that's what I'm trying to say. We can't impose on the market, we can't time the market, but we can allow time on a project so that the market can dictate and see if that can achieve our goals. And I think that's important. The other thing I think it's important, and we haven't heard that here, maybe we'll hear that a little bit more, is aesthetic matters. I don't want to see white and gray stucco walls with red tile, and that just, it, I would like to see an aesthetic, an agreement with this company about the type of aesthetic that we're going to build downtown because the built environment around people matters, both how they, the planting, everything. So I think that's going to be important because that adds value and makes it a place that people want to live, not just initially, but as it does get sold, succeeding generations that do move into here, it's important to start that foundation well. And the transportation plan is pretty interesting to me. I perked up when you said the Waymo particularly and these micro routes. And look, Mr. Brady was correct, that we don't want to subsidize one part of the area from other portions of the city. But to be fair, West Mesa is far better served in public transportation than East Mesa's served, right? So that always happens a little bit. Putting some investment, a little seed money into, if you will, into micro-transit routes, even though we're potentially start in West Mesa and downtown, I think has value for those of us who live in East Mesa, because I think about Phoenix, Mason, Gateway Airport, ASU Polytechnic, and Eastmark, and all these communities. And that could really be very well-served by a micro route, but the market just isn't here. Here we go, talking about markets again. The market isn't there for that. This might be the place to actually invest a little money to try this out so that, hey, if it works here, it very well could work over by Gateway Airport. So I'm very interested to see how we, how staff works through coming with the micro route. That's a good program. So, thank you.
Sure.
I'm just going to add one more comment. Find me any condominiums in the downtown area that are for sale. Any condominium project.
Yeah.
So my point is, an apartment dweller someday may want to live in a condominium for sale product because they've graduated to that. And therefore, so we have to provide diversity in our housing. And that's the only thing I'm kind of, excuse me, focusing on is because there's no condominiums for sale in the downtown area. And as you, I bet you can go out two or three miles away from the downtown core, there's no condos for sale.
Councilmember Freeman, I will, you've probably heard me say this before, condominiums are one of the most difficult housing products for any developer because of the liabilities that stick with them for 10 years. And it's on the builder as well as the developer. Where you do see condominiums, they're very high-price point condominiums where they can absorb that risk because the profit margin's that much higher. And so while, until we, until we address some of the regulatory side of this that allows frivolous lawsuits against builders that end up costing liability on condominiums, they will, they will continue to be a challenge.
I know, there's the 10-year mark. So just for comment, that's just wanted to.
But I completely agree with you. We, we have several developers that we work with now, and condominiums are always a discussion that we want to have with them as well. And they are developers that have done condominiums themselves in other markets.
That, that issue sounds like a bill that the legislature should be taking up to address the housing affordability piece.
I think they're ones that created.
That would be, that would actually be a productive.
Probably they created the liability.
Yeah, eliminate the.
Yeah, eliminate the liability. Yeah, that's.
Something that they did.
Hopefully someone, one of our legislators is listening to this meeting. We'll include that in our conversations with them. Yes, Ms. Duff.
On the shuttle, we did, just visioning to do autonomous shuttle around downtown would be awesome and really put us on the map. But, well, we'll keep on dreaming and maybe put that as an idea for RFP that we're, that I'm. I agree with having these townhomes for sale in the MOU. At-market or above-market, if they need to go above-market, that's fine. On the offset, though, I also want to request we have some affordable units. And that can be achieved maybe from some offsets of a Jiplit. I know they chose not to elect in that, but there is a value that could bring, you know, down the price and not have a building or a section that's affordable. No, it's just X amount of units, maybe 10%. I don't know. Depending on where we can find the offset to keep them affordable, it would dictate maybe the number of units. I would like to see 10%, but we've got to look at the dollars too. And being 50% AMI is where we're really, really hurting. As the mayor stated, we are in an affordability crisis for housing. And 50% AMI sounds, well, you know, that's, that's pretty aggressive. But then I think about the starting salaries at most businesses, including the city, is about 50% AMI. It's crazy with the housing costs right now that I have somewhere, I have written down with a 50% AMI. But, you know, it's, okay, I'll have to look at my chart. It's my, but you know, like someone making $40,000, I think AMI is like 80 or 100, somewhere in there. Someone making 40-some thousand dollars is at 50% AMI. So there's a lot of numbers that have to go into, the, the number of units, what the values are, what we can offer. Maybe we have to go to 80%, I don't know. Some kind of calculation in there to have some affordability. I love the opportunity, the possibility, because we own this property, to have all incomes represented from some affordable units, market rate units, and, yes, higher-end units, and have a beautiful community that is not separated by your income or, or your life status of, you know, beginning your life or, you know, on social security, whatever. Doesn't matter to have a blend of community and not separated by income. So that would be a very strong request. There is a number, there's a lot of community members that also support some affordable housing. I know we'll hear from them, especially looking at the history of the property. It was low-income housing, people of color, Escobedo project, and just, and it was, the property was purchased by the city and, and bladed for other projects, and it was low-income housing. So I think to pay homage and respect to those people who were bought out of that property, for-sell of the property, I would like to see some of the, you know, the affordable housing replaced for that. So, all right, so for sale on the townhomes on the MOU, and also some affordable units. We'd have to work at, look at numbers or my request. As far as.
So we're going to have to have this discussion with council. This is a major element for the developer. So it's worth understanding the value, but it, I need to have direction from, we'll have to have direction from the council because we've had this conversation with the developer, and the question will be, you know, whether there's, what the subsidy would be for us to make that happen, or whether they're still interested in pursuing. So at some point in this, this morning, we need direction from the council about whether that's going to be.
Do you need that in this meeting?
Well, we're coming to council with the proposed MOU.
On April 1st.
On April 1st.
Okay. If, if I may, Mayor, I can, I can kind of frame this for you, because we have had, as Chris said, we have had this discussion with developer. They are more than willing to incorporate affordable housing into this project. But that comes with, with an expectation that the city would help provide some level of subsidy to offset the, the loss in their, their profit. Essentially, their pro forma would be hurt by the inclusion of affordable housing. So just to give, now, I didn't, I didn't pull up AMIs and what rents are for, depending on what, whether you're 50, 80, 100, whatever. But just to, just to give by-way example, let's say 10% of the units, 100 units were, were affordable. Let's say the affordable rent was $1,500 a month, based on what we heard earlier this morning, that that's maybe a one-bedroom unit in Mesa right now for, for a certain area of median income. Let's say the market rent's $200, $2,000. So it's a delta of $500 a month that they'd be looking for subsidy. So $6,000 per year per unit. For 100 units, that's about $600,000 a year. If we were looking for 15 years of affordability, that would be a subsidy of around $9 million. Whether that subsidy, how we would provide that subsidy, whether it be in, in offset land value, land sale cost, or, or other mechanisms, that's just something that we need to know that, as a staff, to be able to have this negotiation with them, we just need to know that we have the support of council to do so.
I think there needs to be a little bit of give also from the developer on that. And if they can get above-market on other units, and then looking at the Jiplit, I don't know, other, other things. And to have 10 years upfront for, for, I don't know, there's, I don't know how this affordable, what the possibilities are. But with the majority of this 85201, you have 56% or at 50% or lower.
So the question is, do we try to match what's already here, or is this the opportunity to use something higher? And that's the debate. And then the question is, which phase do you impose this on? Do you do it in the, you know, for-sell owner first phase, or do you do it in the later phases where you have the higher density, and maybe you have the opportunity in those units where you can, you know, the cost, the impact is not quite the same to the developer. I mean, it's more of a significant impact on a owner occupied, you know, owner-owned condo than it would be on a.
Let's say years.
Units within a multifamily development, so.
Just curious, Jeff, have they expressed any like student housing, less amenitized pieces that creates a little bit more affordable piece from the normal market rate piece? Because maybe that's where the wiggle room is, can be offered, where they, it's a little bit less fancier or something that maybe it creates more of a price affordability for students, or some subset of, of folks that can't afford, you know, you look at some of the cul-de-sac, you know, it's, it's pretty expensive too, even the for-sell product, right? You're talking about $200, $250 a square feet. So it's, you know, it's, it, it prices out a lot of folks from the onset. But, so I don't know, that's, those types of discussions have occurred, or, or what's the, what's the, the opportunities there to create some, some lesser amenitized apartments or something that could be a little bit less affordable, a little bit less than the market rate that gives more opportunities for students or some other, some other folks that can afford living here, so.
Mayor, councilmember Heredia, Vice Mayor Heredia, I'm sorry. We, they have, Cul-de-sac has had some initial discussions with, with ASU about potential partnership. I don't, I don't remember if it was specific to student housing, or whether it was about potentially other ASU opportunities. We will definitely have that discussion with them going forward. One thing I should note is that there's nothing in the MOU that we are going to bring on April 1st that would preclude us from having any of these discussions as part of the development agreement negotiations. It's just.
But it helps.
Prior to those negotiations, we need to.
It's not fair to drop it on them.
Right. Prior to the, while, prior to going too far into those negotiations, we just need to know from a staff perspective what direction council wants us to go, knowing what the, what their, their response will be that, we have had enough discussions with them to know that they will not build affordable housing without some level of subsidy from the city. And, and as I described it, is, is along the line of what they have mentioned to us.
And what we intended to do with our proceeds is to help subs, not subside, but help contribute to.
The infrastructure.
Public amenities, the, you know, if there's going to be a transit or some kind of connecting path, whatever, to get, make it easier to walk from the cul-de-sac to the light rail, that's, we are going to reinvest our proceeds into those kind of physical elements that not only benefit, obviously benefit the individuals who live there, but it could benefit others in the community. So it keeps it in the public realm. That's how we were anticipating using most of the proceeds from the sale.
And I, you reminded me of something, Mr. Brady. I forgot to mention, the appraisal is in process now. We are not far away from having the appraisal of the first phase completed. We will be able to have some level of understanding of what the, the sale price of the property will be as well. So we'll have a better understanding of what is available to us to use for, for infrastructure and enhanced streetscapes, things along that line, or other subsidies.
The Jiplit is eight years, right?
Well, they, the reason that we put in that, they have specifically said that they are not requesting a Jiplit.
What's the value of a?
Oh, we, we have not done an analysis to be able to know what the value of the Jiplit is.
By the time they do this deal, that Jiplit is getting, is getting watered down even more by the legislature.
We, we, we specific, councilmember, I want to just make sure, we did, we specifically talked with them about the Jiplit. The reason we included in here is that they, when it came down to it, they specifically stated they did not want to go for a Jiplit.
I have some thoughts on the affordable housing question. And I, Jen has been raising this question since day one. And so I, and this is something that she and I disagree on. And, and we've had a friendly, lots of friendly conversations about this. I'll go back to the point I made earlier. I think we need diversity in housing in downtown Mesa. And right now, we are checking a lot of affordable housing boxes in downtown Mesa. Immediately across the street from this project is the Escobedo Housing Project. Just, there's a developer that's going to be walking in, if they haven't already, with a senior affordable housing project at Center Street and University, which I support. I support Escobedo as well. Across the street the other way, we've got El Rancho, we've got Encore, we've got La Macida, we've got Salvation Army has a, a affordable housing project in the Washington Park Escobedo neighborhood. So literally, within a very short walk of this piece of property, there are multiple affordable housing projects. What this part of Mesa needs is market rate and above-market rate housing, if we're going to have diversity, if we're going to have disposable income that's bringing in additional investment. So I support affordable housing. And I think that's evidenced by the fact that we have many, many affordable housing projects in a short distance from this piece of dirt. So I think it would be a mistake to do that again. We need to get something diverse. We need to get something that's going to attract investment and grocery stores and all of the amenities that we're looking to see. Mr. Summers.
I support your comments, Mayor.
And that answered my question too. I really kind of wanted to understand the landscape of the market around it. I wasn't fully familiar. Thank you for that, Mayor. And, and I would have to agree with you. With that amount of existing affordable housing, I think that it's the right thing to do. We need an influx of income to support the retail that we're asking for as well and desiring. And I think, I think this is a, is a better balance with the existing affordable housing that we have.
Mayor, if I can just add to, I was trying to think of all the affordable housing that you mentioned around the area, and it is robust, and I appreciate that. But I think this is a niche that we need to fully consummate and make good for downtown area and uplift our neighborhoods, because I can see the ripple effect going out from this development to just energizing our existing neighborhoods and making them proud. So I'm, I'm okay moving forward with what's been presented.
Over the last 10 years, we've, have about 15% of our units are affordable in the downtown area. Our existing population and low-income or whatever, I would say is around, you know, over 50%. So in other words, we're saying to our existing population, including employees that are working here in Mesa, you, okay, let's go back to the existing population. You need to go find someplace else to live, because we're not going to be able to be affordable, because we are evolving, we are growing, we, rents are up 40, 50%, right? We have to have that mix. We need people who are working service jobs. We need people who are beginning their salaries. We need, you know, to have places for people. I think in, if we weren't in an affordable housing crisis, and you step outside of any of these buildings in downtown, you're going to see homeless people, people who can't afford a home. We have 1,000 people on our waiting list for vouchers overall as a city. The crisis is very real. And what is the city of Mesa doing other than waiting, you know, for a project to show up, which is not welcome in downtown? So what are we contributing? What are we doing? What are we negotiating in order to address the crisis? And I think 10% or whatever number that works out to offset Jiplit, or whatever we can come up that is reasonable for the developer to make their profits, is reasonable for the city to put their, in the infrastructure, but have some kind of give-back. Now, I wish we had a program like Tempe, like Housing for All, where we had a fund where people could contribute, and now those monies were put towards affordable projects or whatever. We don't have that. But we have this land. And I don't know what this land is worth, but it's 25 acres. I think we have some kind of wiggle room in 25 acres over 10 years to do something, and it would be in the apartments. It would not be in townhomes as a for-sale project if you're needing, you know. So I'm looking at Phase 2 possibly, but it's just finding those units throughout, whatever we can come up with and putting it in. And we're making a statement that everybody can live here in one complex. You don't, if you're affordable, you don't have to be in a slum or in an affordable project. You are in part of our community in downtown.
I think, I'll just chime in to my comment on kind of figuring out within developments, I think the developments that the mayor mentioned, a lot of them are, you know, all affordable units, right, in those developments. I think models that builds further communities that you see across the country more and more of is adding the different types of, of pricey models within a market rate development, right? Because I think we want to embed affordable units into market rate units, not with, go, go outside, I think, the, the, the scope that we have in these larger, like just all affordable. I think we have to figure out, and, and, you know, the legislature hasn't allowed us based on inclusion, inclusion or zoning, and prohibit us to negotiate those pieces. But when we have the opportunity to figure out different types of pricey models within developments, I think that's, that's going to be an important piece moving forward when we are discussing, and we have the ability to develop agreements around some, some of these units of, to be some affordable, right? It'll still be, I think, higher than the, the units that you see at Art Space, or, or, you know, El Rancho, or, you know, Washington Escobedo. It will be priced higher than those, but it would be, I think, a little bit more affordable than what's going to be a market for the whole development, right? So I think that's, that's kind of the, the evolution of, of, of the affordability market is, how do we embed, and when we have opportunities, affordability within the market rate developments when we're discussing some of these development agreements in the future? So maybe it's, it's not the, the right, the, the right time in this one, but I think that's, that's for the future. How do, we need to figure out, how do we do that? You know, again, it's a. how do we do that? You know, again, it's a policy change to be able to do it at the, at the state level in the future, I think, because we don't have this opportunity in every development. But it's, it's a larger discussion to have, because the model of just building, again, all affordable, I don't think that's, we, people go to that piece immediately. I think the blending in affordable into these, these, these larger developments is a discussion that we should have as we have more, more of this housing issue in front of us, right? So.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm going to say that, again, I admire Jen's point on this, and, and she's not wrong. I'm not, but I'm just saying that, that I think we've done a lot. And again, I'll, I'll just thank you for reminding me, Art Space, Encore, El Rancho, Escobedo, Salvation Army are all walking distance. And again, I'm going to vote in favor of affordable housing at University and Center for a senior project that's walking in the door right now. So that, I think, and then Mesa Royale, we should mention, is coming in at two, two projects that are on the drawing board for more affordable housing. So again, my, my comment on this is that we need diversity in housing. We need to have some market rate housing. It can't be exclusively affordable housing in downtown Mesa. And I think, but I'm sorry to beat a dead horse, I've already said that once before. Any additional discussion on this point? So, yes?
I'd just like to make, I, I agree with Vice Mayor Heredia in that the optimal way to, to include affordable housing, and I think Jen said it too, is to integrate it within the same complex, absolutely. But I don't quite think our downtown is there yet. I think we are trying to create that mix in the downtown, and we're heavy on the affordable side. I think once we get to that point, that we've, we've attracted more market rate, and we're kind of running down that road, I, I would agree. I think the way to build is to, to include it within the same development. I, I don't think we're there yet. That's my thought. Thank you.
15% of the units that have been built in the last 10 years are affordable in downtown. So it's, it's not like we're a huge percent.
So what's the total, though? That's a bill, and I mean, so what's the to, you know, I, I think the landscape total is probably more on the affordable side, not in the newly built, right? Is that what?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
If you take every
Existing, everything that exists today.
In downtown, Jeff, you tell me. I don't have the numbers, but.
We don't know. There's a lot of old stock that are, you know, 50, 100 years old. I, you know, what those rates are, I don't, I don't know. I mean, some of the old stock is some of the most expensive in Mesa, and some of it is some of the cheapest in Mesa. So it would be difficult to say.
Not that I, not that I want to belabor the point. And, and I think most people, I am, I am a supporter of affordable housing. I think we need, I think we need, we do have a housing issue in the state and in our city that we do need to address. But to, to, I guess, to one point that we haven't made yet, the support of a development in which you can choose to not have a car does help with affordability by itself as well. If you can live without a car, you don't have transportation costs to some degree. That is helping to make this a more affordable development. Councilmember Duff, I, you know, you and I have these discussions. You know I'm a supporter of affordable housing, and I would have, would, would have no, like, nothing more than to be able to, to have these discussions with Cul-de-sac. I just know that in order for us to be able to have this discussion with Cul-de-sac, that they will expect some level of offsetting subsidy that we need to bring to the table.
All right. I'm going to say that I think it's the consensus of the group that we not entertain affordable housing at Cul-de-sac.
Great. Okay. Do we have more of the presentation?
Nope, that's.
Anything, any other questions on this item? It will, the MOU will be on the April 1st agenda.
I do have some other questions outside of affordable housing.
Sure.
So on the streets, if you can go to slide number four. I'm just trying to understand. Okay, so the southmost street is Second Street?
Yes.
And that's going to have a green buffer, as you said?
Yes.
We're not doing anything to bring in, like, additional, on a previous project, we're talking about doing a median there, or, what is that, what is that transition point to the historic south of there?
So on the previous project, there, there wasn't going to be a median in Second Street. It was just that nice wide buffer.
Okay, okay.
So that, that's, we're continuing that. It's part of the guiding principles from our original concepts. Where we did talk about doing medians was on the north-south street of Hibbert to help soften, particularly, this is one where the, the city can, can step in and help, because Hibbert going south to Main Street goes through the Wilbur Neighborhood, and it is a very wide street. It's a, it's a bone of contention to them today from cut-through traffic. And with adding 1,000 units just to the north, if we can do something to help calm the traffic on Hibbert to Main Street, that will be something that would be very, I think, appreciated by the neighborhood to the south.
Yeah, putting some greenway, and then we certainly have enough width to put a multimodal path or a protected bike lane or something like that. We certainly have the width and to especially not encouraging cars to have a safe passageway to Main Street along Hibbert seems like a natural. So then, going north from Second Street, there's a Third Street. I'm familiar with that. Now, there seems to be an additional East West Street that, is that created? Is that?
That, yes, that would be a new.
That's a new street? So the Second Street from the south is a newly created street?
Yes.
Okay. And then, how about Wilbur Street itself?
So Wilbur is actually, it's hard to, I don't know if my, if the mouse shows up, but Wilbur is about here.
Okay.
So they would be eliminating that as a, as a public right-of-way and, and using that for internal circulation.
Okay, okay. So it's, so it's not reached from Second Street?
Correct.
Yeah, it'll be close off, okay. And then, where is Hibbert on here?
Hibbert is the west, the, just one, the north-south street, just one west of the, yes.
Okay, so that's the Hibbert.
I don't know if the mouse shows up there or not.
All right, okay. I just wanted to kind of clarify how the streets were laying out. There's three. I, I support the current parking ratio. I don't want to go for more. I think there's a commitment here. You know, a lot of apartments now, going forward, looking at the affordability part, or some, you know, there's been suggestions to separate the cost of parking from the units, and the people who want cars to charge for it, or something like that. Because there, if we increase the parking here, that will increase the rents, because we have to provide that space that is, doesn't have any value that they can charge rent for. So I, you know, I, I don't want to increase parking. I don't think it's the way of the world. And if they needed to, in order to constrain parking, they could always charge for it. And eventually, downtown Mesa will be in this world of paid parking on our streets, or on, in our garages. We will get there, not right now. We don't have the density, but we will, and that will be the, part of the reality. And we're looking with this, for this project into the future. I think that's most of... Oh, and I would like to also mention, oh, on the for-sale side of it, it's going to be very difficult to get for-sale condos. I agree, having for-sale townhomes and getting that in the MOU, but for-sale condos might be difficult, but just because of this condo, we got to change things at the state in order to make, that's why you don't see them. And the second thing is Cul-de-sac owns their, keeps their projects. They just don't build it and sell it. And they highly program it and manage it. I know the owner, one of the principals in Cul-de-sac actually lives in Cul-de-sac, Tempe. So they, with the rental income, part of their model is there's constant community events, there's inviting the public in, there's all kinds of ways to engage public, and it's highly managed and amenitized in that way. And I think that's just part of their model. So that's about it. Thanks.
All right.
I just have one more comment, that I also would agree with the reduced parking. I mean, as you've stated, I think those that choose to live here, it's an intentional choice to perhaps not have, have a car if there's not space, and to use transit and walk and bike. So, and I think, as you've stated, Jeff, there, we don't have a parking problem downtown. We may, if you want to park right in front of a store.
Exactly.
We, yeah. But as far as a space for you, there are plenty for the existing amount of cars that are down here. So, thank you.
And for the record, I'm not opposed to the reduced parking. I just want to make sure we have enough. So there's a difference between saying, I never said I didn't want reduced. I just want to make sure that we're really looking carefully at all the retail, the potential grocery store, all the things.
Now, now, there's staff behind me. They're probably shooting me with eye daggers right now that I'm continuing this discussion. But what we didn't mention is that our, our development
There's also people in front of you.
You bumped us last week, Mayor, so.
All right.
The, the agreement also is going to include provisions to provide access to existing parking if needed. So with the purchase of the Hibbert Garage, if you remember, one of the provisions of that is we're holding 300 parking spaces, around 300 parking spaces that can be used to offset and support private development. One of the investors in Cul-de-sac is the, is the group that sold us that parking garage. They may or may not have been thinking ahead for that purpose. And on top of that, we'll also be moving, so before Chris changes my mind.
Yeah, no, I, I would just say this. What I'm more concerned about is, as the city, as the property owner immediately west of this development, north and northwest, and it's an open parking lot, I am concerned that if they are not paying for their parking at Cul-de-sac, or someone's coming to, they're having a birthday party, that is what I'm concerned about, is that they may be parking in all of this public parking, or even the hotels parking to the west. I think that's where the conflict's going to come. So we may have to develop, you know, securitize way, you know, ways to restrict parking in there, because, you know, we see this, Gilbert's had this, right, where they've created these mini, you know, small subdivisions with high density and narrow streets and limited parking. But they, you know, when you have at a birthday party or something, right, it, it spills out. So we're going to have to be very restrictive. So it's not just the people who live here, it's the people who are coming to visit. The people here have to recognize there's very little, you know, little or no parking. We would encourage them to go park in the park-and-ride at Valley Metro and walk on over. But it's going to be, it's, it will not be easy. We know in Tempe that there is still, as much as they say, no vehicles, vehicles are showing up, right? I mean, there's, it's happening. But again, it's just a lifestyle. It's something I think we can try, but it's going to, all of us, including the city who's an adjacent property owner, we're going to be impacted.
The hotel is quite problematic to park at, when you have to go there for an event. It's hard to find a parking spot. And, and I would hate for this to make that worse. So I, I agree, we need to look at some solutions for that.
All right.
If we can get all our city vehicles off now here.
The Centennial Garage will have availability, will have additional parking available, yes.
I'd just like to point out that it's parking, having a parking problem is what we aspired to have in downtown Mesa back in the day. So it's a good thing. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for that. And thank you, Council, for that great discussion. It's exciting to see things happening on this piece of property. We're going to have a recess for 10 minutes. We'll reconvene at 9:25 for the remainder of the agenda. Okay, thank you. We're at 9:25, and we'll reconvene. Item 1C on our agenda is a presentation and discussion on the downtown restaurant incubator. Mr. McVeigh, welcome back.
Good morning, Mayor, again.
Following up from last week, sorry, sorry to Jay. We wanted to just give you a quick update as to where we are with the restaurant incubator. First, I'll just give you a kind of a reminder of where we are, how we got to where we are. This is, again, an ARPA-funded project. Irma mentioned this one last week in her presentation. So far, we have already used $1.6 million of the ARPA funding to purchase 111 West Main Street. That building will be used to create a restaurant and food business incubator with the intent of essentially growing our own food businesses in downtown, and hopefully to support broader food businesses across the city. It'll be a unique model with five to seven internal restaurant spaces in a modern food court layout. And again, the idea is to, to create startups, that we can then hopefully grow into solid brick-and-mortar businesses that will be in downtown, or maybe we can get them to D5, D6, as long as we can keep them in Mesa, it'd be our long-term goal.
And preliminary design, we, we, you've seen the, the initial ones at the last presentation. We worked with GH2 Architects and Local First to come up with the key ideas so we can put it into the RFP for the design-build process, for the proposals we got. The ideas were first floor focused with a one large kitchen, and then five smaller, smaller serving bays for five different businesses to operate in, and then two retail kiosks in that area. It would be a, a public food hall would be the, the main dining area there. And we'd incorporate the existing safe into some kind of bar aspect, aspect to that. And the second floor would be office space for Local First to utilize. It's just a small area upstairs. And then in the basement, the initial plan was do classroom space as well as another production kitchen, where they could do packaged foods and things like that, and then go through the whole process of photography, fulfillment for shipping, anything like that as part of it, too.
So we use that concept, the initial concept, to, to solicit for a design-build contractor. And so important to note that this will be the first design, design-build delivery method that we use for a construction project in the city. We received two responses to the RFQ for a design-build contractor. We evaluated those based on their, their, their ability to deliver the project, as well as their cost to deliver. We are moving forward with an award to 180 Degrees Design Build. You will see that on your April 1st council agenda to approve their construction contract. The
Time, because we're not doing a low bid. We're trying to choose another alternative. But this was, there are very few alternatives of how to procure this construction by per federal rules. And since these are ARPA dollars, we had to follow their process. So it's taken a, a longer process, what should we say, for us, because we've never done the design-build, but we had to put in place the processes in order to do that. And appreciate City Legal and everybody to do that. But it's not that we're just trying to be unique. It's just that because of the source of funding, and we didn't want to just do a typical low bid, you know, blind process. So that's why we're, I just want to make sure you understand why we're doing that. It's unique for this project.
The other nice part about design-build is the contract that you see on April 1st will be the only contract you see. There will not be a return back for cost increases. This is a GMP for the entire project, and it cannot increase, because that's the, the nature of design-build. Whereas in a low bid, we could get a low bid based off a concept, and then you move forward and you do your final design, and you find out that the cost for the final design is greater than the cost of the concept design. So going forward, the contract with 180 Degrees would include full design of the entire building. So full final design for the first, second floor and the basement. It will include the full build-out of the first floor and the exterior improvements, but it will only include the build-out of, to a warm shell for the second floor and the basement. That would include all mechanical, electrical, and plumbing improvements that would support the final build-out down the road. The contract amount is $4.57 million.
So Mayor and Council, again, like a lot of projects you've heard about and will hear about in the future, we've had to reduce the scope of this project. We originally presented building out, well, I guess, the second floor and the basement. And so we've had to make the project work within the budget. So some of these are the items that have had to be deferred, I guess is the right word to say.
We, we, we did have each of the, we did, as part of the responses to the RFQ, require the, the contractors to bid out each, each level as a phase, or as an alternate, to include, and I should say, we, we have already increased the, the available ARPA budget for this project to get to this point by a significant amount. To include the basement and the second floor would be approximately more than, a little bit more than $3 million in addition to what you're already seeing on this number. So that, at some point, and talking with our partner, Local First Arizona, at some point, there's going to be opportunities for them to seek other funding opportunities to be able to complete the build-out, because we will deliver them a, a space ready to go into tenant improvements, should they get grant funding or some other source of.
That was actually my question, because the kind of concept of this whole place is the teaching is the teaching part. And so, if you don't have the production and food kitchens and classrooms in the basement, can they really do the full program that they seek to do? But you're saying they probably just look for funding elsewhere to--
And they, Councilmember Spillowsbury, they will still be doing a very robust programming with just the final buildout of the first floor. They will still be able to support many more than the, many more incubation of many more businesses than just the five or seven that are going to be in the retail space.
Okay, but just maybe not their full ideal programming without that basement level?
So, the basement included, included not only some classroom space, but it was really, the basement was going to be more geared towards the food businesses versus the restaurants. So, let's say you make chocolate. You can have a place to make the chocolate, do your production, packaging, photos--
So, it was going to be chocolate? Well, we should find the money for that. Wait a minute, I missed that point. Never mind.
If we told Kimber that all she had to do is bring a chocolate business, I'm sure she would find one.
Okay, so, the actual business restaurants that would be using the first floor aren't necessarily the same ones that would be using the basement.
Yeah, the basement was definitely geared more towards those folks that would be on the food business side. It could even be catering. So, you could have a space where people could come in and then sample the foods that are available from the caterer. But it was more about the value add of a food business.
Okay, and then since I have the mic open, is the, so, five restaurant spaces, what did you call it? Five restaurant bays and two retail kiosks. What does that mean exactly? Like, are you going up to the restaurant bay and paying for your food right there? And then what is the, so then what are the retail kiosks?
So, the retail kiosks, so you're exactly right, Councilmember Spillowsbury. It'll be a communal seating area. You can--
Like a food court?
Just like a food court, modern food court. So, you go up to the restaurant you want to, you pay there. But there will be an opportunity for a couple of kiosk space where they do have, within El Rancho, the Fuerza Kitchen at El Rancho as well, they have, they do have food businesses, and they're incubating there as well. So, the kiosk would be an opportunity still for a food business to have a retail presence. So, we could potentially still get our chocolate sales.
Oh, okay, okay. I was just in Charlottesville, Virginia, where University of Virginia is, and they have this really fun space in a historic building that was just like a big giant food court. And it was, it made me excited. A little bigger than this, but it made me excited for this concept.
Thank you. Proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. So, lease update. We are in the final phases of completing the lease with Local First. So, they will be operating the program, and so they will be the leasing on the space. We expect to have that on the City Council Agenda for April 1 as well, to get your approval for that. Basically, the lease makes the space their responsibility to take care of going forward. They will be the tenant, will be the landlord. We will provide the space furnished with the equipment in it, and at that point, it all becomes their responsibility to maintain. So, and then we're responsible for the normal, like HVAC, things like that going forward. They do have rent that they will be paying, $10,000 a year for that. And then any money that they make off the program itself will be reinvested into the program. That is part of the lease. There's a 10-year lease term on the lease, and then there's three, five-year renewal terms built into it as well.
So, next steps, April 1 is a big date for us. We will bring the design build contract. Once the design build contract is executed, it'll take, will be, we'll start the final design, which will take eight to 10 months. Hopefully, we can shave a little bit of time off of that. Following the final design, we're looking at a 10 to 12-month construction window, so we'll have delivery of the project in spring of 2026. We also intend to bring the lease agreement so that there is a, if you're going to approve a construction contract, that we can show you on the other side why you're approving that construction contract, so that we'll have a lease agreement hopefully on April 1 Agenda as well, with their programming starting as soon as the building can be delivered in the spring of 26. Much faster. Happy to--
That was great. I'm really excited about this. I'm, this is going to be very popular, very successful, and I wish we could have it done tomorrow. Downtown is already packed at lunchtime.
Making me hungry.
That's right. So, this is on the agenda for the 1st of April?
Yep.
All right. Council, any additional questions or discussion on this item? All right. Thank you, Jeff and Jimmy. Great, great job. Next item, item 1D is a presentation and discussion on the Gateway Library Project. Ladies, thank you for your patience this morning.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and thank you for your patience. We're excited to be here this morning. I'm Polly Bonnet, Library Director, here with Beth Hunning, our city engineer. And before we get started, I just wanted to say thank you to Council for your support, to our city manager, to the voters who have allowed us this opportunity to be here today. And we're excited to share the newest library that will join the Mesa Library family. Welcome to the Gateway Library, your newest destination where we are preparing to finally land. We're going to play on the airport theme a little bit. So, first, we wanted to start with an aerial view to remind you of why this was an ideal location for the new library. It's outlined in red there. It'll be integrated into an already active community surrounded by public spaces and other amenities. And we've begun to make partnerships already with our neighboring organizations there, where we envision that we're going to be collaborating to provide enhanced opportunities and activities for Mesa residents. All right, and this shows where the library sits on the site, next to the Great Park. You may recognize the orange monster there. Some of those surrounding spaces, like the orange monster that are identifiable in Eastmark or at Eastmark, went into the inspiration for designing the building. We also took into consideration the architectural style and elements that are characteristic to Eastmark. And here, I'll talk a little bit about the market concept for the library. When we were having programming discussions for the library and what our goals were, we really envisioned this to serve as a hub for connection and inspiration of knowledge. And out of that grew this concept of a marketplace. So, what the market would do, when you see inspiration photos there, would serve as a very active and engaged public meeting area, community gathering space. And you'd have this interior boulevard where you can see clear connections to the surrounding programming areas, or what we would like to call discovery points. You also see the three entrance entrances to the library. We wanted to maximize access and also create kind of energy and movement from the interior and exterior connections. And then this is another aerial view of the programming spaces. I'll go through this pretty quickly. You have seen this before, I believe, but stop me if you have any questions. I'll start at the lower left corner. That is going to be where our reading patio is. That extends the footprint of the library to the outdoors. And we're excited about this because it's a new feature for us, but it'll overlook the lake and the Great Park. You'll also have some views of sunsets to the west if you choose to sit out on the patio and read. And then it also provides more gathering space outdoors to enjoy those surrounding views. Then you move into the adult area, which has our collections, seating areas, meeting spaces. Further north is the, in that pink area, is the teen zone and teen meeting spaces. We also wanted to make sure there are steady spots for teens. That was one piece of feedback that we got from our community stakeholders. Since that is surrounded by schools, that location will be surrounded by schools. And then we have the children's library, which will include an outdoor programming space, a storytime room there in the middle. And then just to the right of that is a new space for us. It's a sensory-friendly retreat that's on the corner there, the left corner of that blue block. And that blue block is the staff workspaces. And then as you move south, just past the main entrance, we have our public restrooms. And the yellow programming outline there would be for a Think Spot. Right now, we are not funded. We don't have budget capacity for a Think Spot, but it has been planned and programmed and designed to be added in at a future point. And then that lower spot is the community space. And that also includes an outdoor patio to extend options that community members have if they have any meetings, programs, or events. All right, and this is a view of that main entrance from Eastmark Parkway to the east. We like to think the angle of the roof line, again, playing into the airport theme, reminds you that this is a place where ideas take flight.
That landed.
Thank you.
Kind of like, okay, okay.
Thank you. Yeah. I know you've had a long meeting. And then this view from the north, southwards, shows the staff patio on the left, and then the children's patio on the right. That will be an outdoor programming area to encourage play, physical, social, sensory development, and then also provide an outdoor reading space for families. And this view is facing the west. This is the Great Park lawn. It's an active space. There's a lot of use by the surrounding schools and by the community. So, we envision utilizing that space to program with parks and recreation, provide movie nights in the parks, and we're thinking of other outdoor programming that can take place. And this view is from the lake going north. This is the south entrance, and you see all angles of the building are impressive to look at, but this is one that's very striking. You see that dramatic roof line there. And over to what's to my left is the area of the patio, the outdoor reading patio. And you see it kind of wraps around there.
And the lake is really right off this chart, just a little bit to the left.
Right there. This is what we're calling the Plaza Area. This is parking that can be converted into event and festival space for the community and the library. And it really just enhances our ability to be a community anchor there in the Great Park area. And then this is an interior view of the marketplace. We wanted to make sure all of our shelving was on casters, so it could be easily moved to transform that market area into event space if needed. And would you mind going back real quick? Thank you, Beth. That circle towards the middle there, that is the service desk. So, we wanted to make sure that was kind of the central hub and connects all of the entrance points there.
I think you better explain that thing on the left.
The little roof. Well, we piloted a, what we called a Bibliobot at the main library recently, and it got a lot of positive attention. So, we're looking at ways we can incorporate either in the library itself or around the community, book delivery, and it's a great marketing tool as well. We're excited about that. All right. And this is what we're calling the Pixel Paseo. So, if you are, you're traveling between the children's library and the teen zone there going westward, and on the left is the Pixel Paseo. And that is an interactive graphical storytelling wall that's meant to engage our library users, but can also serve as a programmable public art piece.
I mean, we identified this as part of a public art contribution to this project.
Correct, yes, right. Thank you. And then on the right is the entrance to the children's room. We wanted to include a child-sized entrance, and you can see the little guy running through, excited to get in there and get his favorite book. But that's been very popular at our main library, because it does personalize that space for kids. In the children's library, we were very intentional in creating kind of a layered experience for multiple ways to learn and interact and foster that love of reading. So, as you walk in, it's almost an immersive experience where you see this light and shadow play on the wall. We're going to use graphics, light and shadow. We'll have sensory and interactive tools, these reading notes, and then moments around the space where you can gather with your friends or family. And also, this would be anchored, of course, with our book collection. This is another interior look at the marketplace going to the south. And again, you can just see the dramatic roof line there, and it really makes that marketplace feel expansive. To the left is the community room, and to the right will be where our adult space is. All right, and then here is our adult book collection. This is an evening view. The book stacks will be interior lit, and we feel like this serves as a beacon where it's a very welcoming area for you to come in and have world of access to different stories and different destinations at your fingertips for adults.
So, that brings it up to me. This has been a long journey. Whenever we do public buildings like libraries, we need to get them right. So, there's quite a bit of time invested in talking to people out in the community, talking to different staff members about what we think the services should be, what they should, how they should be. You might also remember when we were going to kick this project off, it was April of 2020. And at that time, the project was put on hold for a while while we kind of sorted through what COVID might do to the city's budgets in those days and ages. I think we've all tried to forget it, but it did have an impact on this project. So, it's been a while getting here. And during the time that we have been moving forward with this project, the costs have increased substantially, particularly construction costs. And construction costs are still increasing today as we speak. We currently are funded at the level of about $22.5 million, and the total project is coming in just under $28 million as we bring this contract forward to you on April 1. We have already issued one contract to preorder the electrical HVAC. We are still finding considerably long lead times on those particular parts of every project. And that's really because of the industrial activity you see in the valley, the LG plant, the chip plant up north. Data centers particularly are taking a lot of electrical gear out of the marketplace and are requiring longer and longer lead times for these things. So, we preordered those. So, the next contract you would see on April 1 would be for the remainder of the project, as you see here. This will require some additional funding. We're currently showing that from construction sales tax that's been noted during the economic upturn that we've experienced in recent years, so.
Mr. Summers?
On the funding piece two-- Dark light. On the funding piece two, I heard Think Spot is delayed. I assume that's because for budget decisions. All right, so, have we looked at a way, maybe in the upcoming GO bond, where we might be able to provide some funding? Would that be appropriate, Mr. Brady?
No, yeah, that's a fair point. We've done that with other projects where we've done, you know, come back again in a subsequent bond package to ask for the additional funding. I think that challenge is timing, because we're ready to bring this project or the construction projects to, or contracts, sorry, to the Council on April 1. And again, as we've said, this project's been delayed significantly, and every delay just adds more cost to it. You know, this project started off at just under, or the bond authorization was just under $17 million. Since then, with this increase, we'll have added $12 million to this project. Think Spot is popular, but every library it's been added to at a later date. So, we could certainly move forward with the construction project, the contract, excuse me, of this, of the library. And then if we wanted to include that, if that's what the Council would like to do, to include the Think Spot and the bond package, that would just be a separate--
Yeah.
--project that would come down the road after we've completed the library. So, yeah, that's a possibility.
Okay, then let's put a buzz in your ear to have--
Well, we'll put that together as one of the projects on the list.
I agree with the content. We need to move forward. It's not going to get any cheaper. And what we have heard just recently is there is even more investment in the valley for the industrial development, for chip manufacturing particularly. So, these prices aren't going to come down. We need to get vertical as quickly as possible. And I think, even though I'm disappointed, Think Spot-- Think Spot isn't in the initial construction, asking voters to approve if they want to do a GO bond, and then adding that later is probably the best move. At least we'll be there.
Counsel, any additional questions or discussion? So we'll be voting this on, on this on our April 1st council meeting.
Big agenda.
And I believe they're planning for a groundbreaking on May?
May 18th.
Sorry. Oh, I've got the schedule now, sorry. Thank you for queuing me.
I have to say, it's a spectacular building.
It's, it is. I am so pleased that we were able to move the location where we were originally out where the fire station is, and we swapped.
We did.
And the first time I walked the site and just, it was like, this is a library site. It's not a fire station site, it's not, this is an ideal with the lake, the Great Park. I mean, it's going to connect into the Great Park so you can be walking and throughout Eastmark. It's right, and then on one hand, it's got a charter school to the north. It's got the playground, but then the residence are immediately to the east, and we've already talked to transportation. They already figured out ways that we can create crossings, I'm not sure the right word is, across the street so that we can get neighbors that are walking into the library. So this is, we want to keep reminding everyone, this is the southeast, a southeast regional library. I mean, while it's in Eastmark, it's intended for everyone who lives in southeast Mesa, but it's, very pleased, it's a moment of pride, I think, for the city on this one.
Yeah. Mr. Summers?
Mr. Brady hit a lot of the points I was going to discuss. I think when we originally designed Eastmark, we just needed a fire station location, plopped it down in the middle of the map, and you know, once, once the, once the plan came into focus, started to realize putting a fire station across from homes wasn't the best location, and the new location serves the entire community much better than this, and to use this as a library is just genius for all the reasons that were mentioned. The Hawk device, I think it's called, right? Crosswalk or whatever they're gonna do.
Trying to use the, it's a brand name, but yes.
The Hawk generic device. So, I don't know, maybe I'm just going to get paid for Hawk now for saying it, but whatever that device is that we were going to use is something that the community has been very interested particularly because of the schools that are here, so integrating that is great. We do have a challenge that maybe engineering and parks can help with. There's a rat investigation in the duck pond.
In the where?
The duck pond is right next to the pond, yeah, so.
We call it a lake, but.
The lake. Where I came from, that's a pond.
Hey, we call it Red Mountain Lake.
So we do, we do have issues with rats, so if, during construction naturally, there potential to disrupt habitat, so if we could catch a little rat and kindly dispose of them, that would probably be a help, but some kind of, some kind of effort.
Cats, yeah, there you go.
We actually put up a raptor purchase in this area, so anything we can do to facilitate that, because I think, we don't want to get them in the building either, so this might be an opportunity to combine that effort. Lastly, I love how you designed this, probably with the market idea, and the reason is when, when you go back to the original piece, so just south of, just south there, there's a parking lot by the lake in the pavilion, and the community uses this for events. They'll have food trucks, they'll have tents, there are markets all the time, and of course, the parking is on the Gateway Library site, which is dirt, and I probably shouldn't have said that out loud because it's, county probably wouldn't like that, but when we build this library to then provide a space for those markets to move, clear out the parking, and still have these community events and potentially have them year-round is a fantastic way to work the library into a broader community objective of engagement, so I really love the design of this. Well done. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any additional comments? All right, well, we're looking forward to voting for this on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, Mr. Brady, we're going to continue Jay's presentation.
Yeah, we'll provide the presentation. Well, you have the PowerPoint here, we'll include it again in the city manager's update. We'll find an opportunity, maybe more, we know we're going to do, we're going to try to do a workforce development update during the budget process because we want to address that as a priority, so it may be come to you in pieces as opposed to one long presentation, so we'll figure out a way to get it to you.
Great. Yeah, I think we'd love to hear from our new economic director, get her, get her thoughts.
We're going to give her an opportunity.
That's great. Item two on our agenda is to acknowledge receipt of board minutes. There's a motion to that effect. Thank you, Mr. Summers and Ms. Spillsberry. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next is current events and conferences attended. Council members, anything you'd like to share? Mr. Summers?
So if it's, okay, Julie, I'll start.
Go for it.
Because Julie and I, since we can't hear from economic development today due to the long schedule, we might as well talk about workforce development, and NEU broke ground on a new workforce development project in District 6. It is in partnership with Skybridge and Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. It is specifically focused on preparing a workforce for hospitality. Hospitality in this state counts for some 275,000 jobs, Mesa alone over the last three years. The gross revenue to hotels just in this city was somewhere in the neighborhood of 341 million. That's $24 million in revenue for the city in sales taxes raised, so this is a hugely important component of economic development in our community. It is also the first Class A office space that we're going to see, certainly in District 6 and sometime, but just the idea of hearing Class A office space is being built in our community, we can only hope that we see more Class A office space developed. The concept will include classrooms, a coffee shop, a restaurant, and a future hotel as well, so it was fantastic to see it.
Great. Yeah, and adding another higher education institution to Mesa as well, so that's, that was, I was delighted to see that. Other comments on conferences and activities?
I think Councilmember Freeman wants to mention the farm, City Breakfast. No? Yeah?
Well, why don't you start it out?
Oh, I think it's your thing.
Okay, so, yeah, thank you, Jen, for doing that. So I hosted a Maricopa County Farm Bureau breakfast that we've had annually, and many of you have been there, and it was a great turnout. Thank you to Julie and Jen for being there, and also a lot of elected officials. And we got to meet our new sheriff of Maricopa County, Sheriff Russell Skinner has been appointed. County supervisor spoke about him, but it was a great turnout, little cool, but nice breakfast, and everybody had a good time. Thank you.
Yes, Jen, you're up.
I interrupted already. It was a great event, and I appreciate you having them. I learned so much every year about agriculture business and what it means to Arizona, and I really value that event, so thank you. Also, after that event, I went to coffee with a cop at Los Altos Ranch Market in Staples and Southern with Fiesta PD and some Central PD, and just engagement with the citizens and community, talking about what PD has to offer and any questions they have about public safety. I appreciate that they do those events. That night, I attended the ADU accessory dwelling unit text amendment, text amendment public meeting. It was at the studios. Thank you to Mary and her team for doing that. There was a great dialogue about how, looking at the proposed text amendments that we have for the ADUs and how they could be more meaningful for our residents. That night, after that, I ran over to the NARU's celebration for the New Year with a high faith, and that was at the post. Appreciate having the post in downtown. There are constant events going on there, and it's such a diverse array of community celebrations, and I appreciate being invited to this one to celebrate yet another event. Yesterday, I was at Benedictine University. The city manager, Chris, was there, as well as a number of other people with Benedictine's Board of Trustees and President Joseph Foy. They had their annual meeting, their board meeting there, and so I'm glad they chose Mesa, and it was nice to get to know some of the board members. I want to mention one event coming up is with PD on Thursday, March 28th, Community Medical Services at 2940 East Main. It's an event, it's a resource fair, has all kinds of resources for the community, as well as there'll be onsite interviews for jobs and such. I'm sure it's on social, so do, and that's from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Thursday, March 28th, so put that on your calendar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick, this Saturday, we have a smoke alarm walk with fire and easy burn around the Webster Elementary School neighborhood, so if you live around Webster, we'll, might be knocking on your door to check on, if you need assistance with smoke alarms, there'll be free smoke alarms as well, and so just a heads up for folks in the neighborhood.
Great.
Batteries, yeah.
Great. I need you usually one in the morning when my battery goes out, so, with a ladder, yeah. Julie?
And I'll just mention, since everything else has been mentioned, that I have my district two Easter breakfast, spring breakfast on Saturday, March 30th, the day before Easter from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., Easter egg hunt at 9:00, and it is on Greenfield between Broadway and Southern. Super fun, bring out free event, bring all your kids and grandkids.
How many eggs this year?
6,000.
6,000, okay. They'll all be gone very quickly, I'm sure. Jen?
I'd like to add on one more event I just became aware of, and it's actually in your district, and I've been meaning to make sure you had a copy of this. It's called the Emergency Fiesta. It's, this is on Sunday, March 24th, 11 to 2 at Whitman Park, and it's free resources for resilience and emergency preparedness, so there'll be some local emergency services, learn about prevention and recovery and emergencies, prepare for the heat. It's ASU, Rail, JP Morgan, City of Mesa, Mesa Art Center, Mabel will be there, a number of others as well. So I just learned, Sunday, yeah. I'll send you the flyer. I just learned about it. It didn't come through the city, it came from outside source, so I didn't know about it either, so.
We should catch those.
Thank you.
I'll comment that I was honored to attend the President of the United States event yesterday at Intel and Chandler, where he announced an additional $8.5 billion investment in that facility. It's been fun to see the way that, even though that fab is in our neighboring city, the economic impact it's had on Mesa has been substantial. The international air cargo that we're seeing coming in and out of Gateway with those 747s every day that supply that facility and the other supply chain businesses that we see in Mesa that support the chip manufacturing is, is just been a great boon to the Mesa economy, so it was exciting to see that additional investment. Also tomorrow, we're winding down what I think has been one of our best spring trainings in certainly the last few years, but maybe ever, and just want to encourage everyone, if you haven't had a chance, you know, I think Tuesday is our last game.
Right. I think the A's is like Saturday.
A's are Saturday.
And then the Cubs have the Cardinals coming in.
That's right, St. Louis Cardinals, who are not, are coming over from the Grapefruit League for Monday and Tuesday at Sloan Park, so that should be.
Tuesday's a noon start, though, so it's a little bit earlier than the regular.
1:00 on Monday, noon on Tuesday. Okay. So for Friday, the U.S. Conference of Mayors has a program called Play Ball, and so a lot of the East Valley mayors are going to be participating on Friday, and a lot of kids are being bused in from various, you know, schools and daycare facilities for a baseball event with, with mayors and with young children on Friday, so looking forward to that. Mr. Brady?
One more thing about baseball.
Yes, please, yes.
If you love baseball, and downtown Mesa will have baseball at the yard, all kinds of events and around baseball in the yard in McDonald's, so please stop by that from 11 to 5 on Saturday.
Okay, so that's the closed portion of McDonald's in front of the post. Thank you. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
We'll see in a week. Next Thursday, we'll be also presenting to the council the proposed budget that we'll be reviewing for the month of April.
All right. Get used to some long meetings.
Now till May.
That's right, okay. Thank you. If there's anything else, council, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Summers and Mr. Herardi. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, we are adjourned.